Okay, it's a couple of minutes after eight o'clock, so might as well get started. One preliminary thing, actually two. The first one is the minutes of July 19th were put together by Tom Willoughby, his acting secretary. He sent them to me. I commented on them and they were circulated to the board. As far as I know, there are no comments. So without Tom here not knowing if there are no comments, I think we better put that off for the next session. Second, I expected to have five people here today. We have seven on the board, counting two applicants. And I heard from two that they could not be here. That leaves two unaccounted for. And we may wind up with three. There could be a delay in the train. I don't know. But I will say to each of the applicants that we normally have five on the board voting. In order to have an application that passes, you need three affirmative votes. If you proceed tonight with the three of us, then you'll have to get affirmative votes from all three of us. If there's a negative vote from any one of us, then your application will be denied. And because we may be, and at the moment are, shorthanded, to each of you, I give the option of adjourning, so that you can put this off until our next meeting in September, which is the 27th, and hopefully we'll have a full quorum after the summer holidays are over. But I'll take that, you know, one by one as it comes up. If anybody wants to stick their hand up and say they'd like to pull up in the evening now, I'll do that too. Anyone leaving the room? Okay. We'll see how that works out. All right. We have a letter from the Meili's. Phil Meili points out that he is having health issues, which I'm very sorry to hear about, but he would appreciate it if we heard his application first. And I think that's a very reasonable position. And so, Mr. Meili, whoever else is with you, come on up.
Mr. Clark, I'd like to make just a very brief statement. Before I started this process...
One second, Phil. Okay. We have a volunteer for secretary. Do we need waxes? I suppose so. These are televised. I don't know how this one works. I open my mouth and it makes noise.
(laughing)
Well, it's probably bitter, I think.
That's on right now.
Okay. I'm sorry, Phil. Go ahead.
Mr. Clark, before I started this process, I wrote a letter to Columbia University detailing what I wanted to do, and it included surveys and so on. They are my next door neighbor, and they've always been a very good neighbor to the whole village of Irvington. And they sent the materials down to their legal department. And the head of Nevis, the Irvington property, came by and said, and told me that their legal department had no issues with what I wanted to do, and neither did Nevis. So I felt that I had done the right thing by giving them advance notice, and I've given them copies of all materials submitted to the planning board and to the zoning board. So, and I don't believe any of my neighbors have any objections to the requested variances. Thank you, Mr. Steinsteiner.
Okay. Thank you. You have the mailing, proof of mailing. Do you have the mailing, Phil? The mailing to the neighbors. Does this have the cards in there?
I gave the cards to Mr. Maron. And actually, there are two that I didn't put.
Yeah, there are two here. They were turned in to Mr. Maron earlier, and here's some additional in that envelope that has come in. And I guess this is the copy of...
It's submitted a affidavit of mailing.
Yeah. Do you have that stuff, or they don't give it to you?
They don't give it to us. Normally, it's normally presented at this meeting.
Yeah.
But if an applicant tells us that he or she had neglected mailing, we take that at face value. If you haven't, you know, you're totally exposed to some neighbor who doesn't like you, taking you to court and getting this whole thing.
I got this one. Well, yeah, but you can, in case you want to say something. So, just to give you a really quick understanding of what we're dealing with, there is an existing piece of property that had improvements on it before the Meili's purchased the property, which was in the early 70s.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven. So everything was there. The Meili's went about having a pleasant life on the site with a wonderful deck and other site improvements. And there's some work that's needed to be done on the deck, and they realized this would be a good time to clean things up. They have reduced the size of the deck to pull it off the neighbor's property, but it still approaches into the side yard, and there's an issue with impervious surface under the code. So variances are needed for both of those. This has been to the planning board. The planning board actually took action on this, which is, of course, contingent only on the decision that's made by this board.
Okay. There are two in the charts that were submitted by the applicant. There are two subsets of, as described, undocumented areas. One is the wood deck and steps, which is what I think you've been talking about.
Correct.
And your submission really talks about that. But there's also reference to a concrete walk-in steps.
Right.
And I visit the property. I know where it is. But tell me the history of that.
That was there before they bought the property, and it's how you get around the house. I don't, I don't know that back in the 60s and 70s, that people were being as diligent about recording those kinds of things. And the only reason we refer to it as undocumented is not shown on the survey. But I also have a lot of surveys in my possession of properties that show the house, the garage, maybe the driveway, but don't show the walkway, or things like that. So I think it was just, I don't think it was, it certainly wasn't something that has been added since the Meili's purchased the house.
Okay. And there's no application to do anything to change?
No.
Add to the concrete walk-in steps. Is that right?
No. We're just legalizing that as it is and as it's been since they purchased the house.
Okay. And Phil, I heard your statement. Just to be, just to be clear, you've talked to a representative of Columbia.
Yes.
Or Nevis. They know what you're going to do.
Yes.
We do not have any objection from them tonight. And I gather there's nobody here from Nevis or Columbia? Is that right? Okay. And you're actually going to reduce the size of the deck to bring it off as a Nevis property and only on your own property?
Yes.
And therefore, your coverage, although it's still in excess of what would normally be permitted, will be smaller. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other board members want to comment or question?
What is it, what is it presented with total coverage now, and what are you going down to?
Um, I think we had that in the written documentation. We have, the maximum site coverage is, with the undocumented, is 3,048. And we're going down to 3,045. So we're reducing it 18 square feet. Percentages are 32.15 down to 31.99. They're on that chart.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything, a way of comment from the audience? All right. I think this is a reasonable application. It does involve items on the property that have been there for 40 years, and they're going to be reduced. Columbia is the only neighbor that would be affected, and the representation is they have no issue with it. I'm sure that's correct. So I move to grant the application as stated. Do I have a second? And we'll vote from the left.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Phil. Hope you feel better. All right. Taking the order as stated in the agenda, thereafter, the next application is Michael and Lori Fetner on Cindy Lane.
Good evening. Steven Bessino, architect for Michael and Lori Fetner to Cindy Lane. If you remember, we were here a few months ago for similar application. I do want to brief you as well on the beginning complaints as well, because I know we're at a public hearing. The addition is, purposely the addition is to create an additional bedroom on the second floor of this house, as well as expanding a very tight restrictive garage that is adjacent to the mechanical room downstairs. Primarily, the bedroom upstairs is required because there's only two upstairs now. Mr. and Mrs. Fetner have an expanding family, and they would like to have at least three bedrooms on the upper floor, two adjacent to the master bedroom, so they don't have to go up and down the stairs for children purposes. So the proposal is to put an addition at the front of the house to accommodate a third bedroom upstairs with a small two-foot cantilever on the back. And a deck addition in the back, purpose being that there's an existing wood deck off the corner of the house here that now has to be accessed through the kitchen into the dining room, onto the deck, and then downstairs, only to get back over to here where their pool and their patio is. So the purpose here would be to be able to come out straight out the middle of the house where their kitchen and the dining room area is, and go out to the rear yard. This property is pre-existing non-conforming for several reasons. It's in I-40 zone, which is a 40,000-square-foot minimum. It's under 20,000-square-foot lot area. The setback in the front is 50-foot minimum. As you can see here, the property line went straight through the middle of the existing house. It's obviously all grandfathered, pre-existing. However, any work that is now done to this house for, in the area here, the front or inside, will require a variance because the house has already passed that setback line. In addition to that, because it is in I-40 zone, it's under 20,000 square feet, it has to conform to the new coverage of 12% minimum or maximum matter, which on this property allows only 2,387 square feet. Originally, when this house was approved, and the improvements of the pool and patio were approved, it was 4,000 square feet. The code changes a few years back rendered it 12% and made the property once again existing, pre-existing non-conforming. Again, any work done to this property, even the addition of a small patio or a walkway, would require a variance. If this were in our 20 zone, 16% coverage would be allowed, and actually, our proposal here would meet that requirement. But obviously, the situation is different. Also, there is no FAR issues with this as well, or well under the FAR. So we're really looking at the coverage and then that setback. The addition here is for the location of these two bedrooms here. It's an eight-foot addition in the front of the house, and then a two-foot addition off the back. Originally, if you remember, we had a much larger addition at the back, at the side here, went out the back with a balcony and a front in the front. The restrictions then were the location of the kitchen. This kitchen actually is now shifted out over to here. We've left a narrow area in order to provide for a third bedroom and a master bedroom and a bathroom. For budget purposes, we tried to avoid leaving that, tried to avoid modifying this half of the house. Since then, coming back to the zoning board and realizing we need to reduce the project, the Fetners have decided to redo the kitchen here and shift everything this way. That allowed for a larger area here to encompass the master bedroom and a much smaller bathroom that was originally proposed. The two-foot extension over here is just still to make it work with a hallway down the center and the two bedrooms off of here. And also the bathroom here. Right now, currently, there is one bathroom on that upper floor, and it is in the master bathroom, master bedroom. So that is where your child needs to be bathed, I guess, to go into the master bedroom to be bathed, which is why we really do need a second bathroom on the upper floor. So by modifying this kitchen, bringing this kitchen over here, it allows more room for the addition. It also allowed for the deck to then be shifted over this way. Originally, there was an issue with the deck addition requiring yard variance as well. Through discussion with the planning board and this board as well, we modified it not to require any type of setback here by cutting it off here. But now, being that the kitchen has become part of the application, we're going to be bringing the deck, shifting it even further away from the property, and in from the neighbors, not requiring any variance at all. That way, it's into us actually in the kitchen. The coverage being the issue, I just wanted to make a point and show you that what we previously had proposed was this addition here, a large one in the back, one in the front, and this much larger deck here. We're down to now is this addition in the front, a two-foot cantilever that doesn't require footings, and then a 100-square-foot less deck, which also, the stairs are included in. So 199 square feet is not exactly the area of the deck. The coverages, because we are over currently 20% over what is allowed, which was created by the code change, the coverages seem exorbitant. However, when it's broken down, we are actually eliminating this walkway here, which is 116 square feet. So the net increase of coverage is 288 square feet. That net increase, if you're basing it off of the existing coverage right now, is only a 10% increase. But because we're over 20% already by the code change, it renders it about 32% over the allowable. The front yard setback is 35 and a half feet, or 50. However, the pre-existing corner of this building is 22 and a half feet. So although we do need a variance for that, the existing building exceeds that setback. Just to make the point that the addition in the front of the house is actually about 100 feet back from the property. And in this...
Property.
Property line, I'm just sorry. And as I've mentioned to you previously, this is the area. This is the block. Their house is the furthest back on this five-lot cul-de-sac here. So the addition in the front of the house really would not be visible or would not be an issue with neighborhood as far as the character is concerned, and would actually still not be the house closer than these other lots that are here. I know that the directive from your on the board was to come back here with a more palatable project.
No, if you didn't come back, it would be okay.
Okay, that's true. I'm sorry. Yes. If we wanted to come back, just to come back with a more palatable project. We reduced the coverage by more than half. It was 683. We've come back with 288 by reducing the walkway as well. We're over 50% reduced on that, and we still met out at 10% over what is there now.
Okay.
Questions?
First of all, proof of mailing.
Proof of mailing. We have just to sell it, and I also confirmed it with her today, that she had that, and I had everything I needed. She said yes.
Okay. Thank you. Let me point out one issue. I don't know that you're going to be able to do anything about, but I think you ought to consider it. The application, excuse me, the notice which is available to the public spoke about encroachment of the front yard setback and exceeding allowable coverage. The, the notice from Ed Maron said the same thing, the letter of you. And the application you submitted to the village, however, also talks about the existing deck at the side of the house and the side yard setback. Are you changing that?
No, we are not. What's happening is because, well, I should say we're not changing. We're not increasing anything. We are modifying this area of the deck here by taking up the stairs and connecting it to here. And so by pure modification of that, this setback needs to be reestablished again. And that is why. That's what Ed Maron and the council had told me originally, is that because we are modifying a pre-existing deck, we are on a setback, it needs to be considered variance as well. We're not adding or changing that at all. No.
It's in, it's in the application as such, your application, but it's not in the notice to the public?
It wasn't my notice to the public. It was my notice to the...
That's not...
That's not what I create. No, what I mailed out to the public was exactly in my five-point letter. I have three variances listed, and that's exactly what was issued to the...
Okay. Well, it may or may not ever become an issue, and it may not be a big issue if it does.
I understand.
Just be aware of that.
Thank you.
So the numbers you went through track pretty much what I had calculated. If I'm right, the original application which you submitted back in April would have increased your coverage to 57% over allowable. And we told you that was too harsh, that was your substance. And you pointed out what you wanted to do this time around, the addition in the front, the, still having a deck in the rear, and the cantilever. If I'm right, you have dropped the proposed one-story addition to the rear and a two-story addition on the east side. Am I right about that?
That is correct.
Okay. And you're still taking out the walkways to reduce in coverage by 116 square feet that way?
We're willing to pry about. Yes, we are now.
Okay.
Correct.
So your net increase on this application is 297 or 298?
Correct.
Which is 10%.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Okay. I want to say that I, I think I'm speaking for everybody, that we appreciate the amount of work that obviously went into this after we rejected your last application. You took to heart what we said. Your application is much more modest. Several of us went through the house, and we understand either you're describing, because the place needed to be reorganized, one way or the other. So I think this is a reasonable application, especially in view of our past history and your good faith revision to the application, submitting the application. So I move that this application be granted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote from the right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks very much for your time.
Send your letter confirming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up will be the Rosner application draft report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosner, did you previously live at 17 Bell Way?
I did.
You could be key figures in that.
(laughing) I saw that was on for tonight as well, yes.
Okay. We'll deal with your application first. It may be helpful if you stayed around for that one, though, because there are some questions about that time and what happened during that period.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Good. Thank you. Please go right ahead.
Good evening. I'm David Getz from Luminous Gets Engineers. We've worked on a site plan for Mr. Rosner and his home at 51 Joffrey Court. He's been to the planning board, who sent us here for two specific variances. One is for lot coverage. We are proposing a 2,541 square feet where 1,723 is allowed by code. And the second variance is for construction within the 30-foot aqueduct buffer that's located at the rear of the property. This orange line, which is within a foot or so of the back of the house, shows the 30-foot setback from the rear property line. And this is the old curtain, aqueduct property right behind it. In preparing our planning board application, we addressed what I consider to be the principal potential impact of the construction, and that's increased runoff from the site due to the increased coverage. So there's an existing drywall under the driveway, and our proposal is to add a second drywall. The second drywall is about equal size, so roughly doubling the storage capacity of runoff from the site. The roof drainage system, the gutter system, will tie into the drywalls, which will be interconnected. And we've provided calculations to the village engineers showing that for the 100-year storm, we have enough capacity in this system to more than offset the increased runoff that would occur from the construction if the variances are granted.
Did the planning board agree with you?
They haven't issued a final decision. We've submitted those calculations for a review, and they...
Yeah, I think they hurried us over here based upon the dates of the different meetings. They said, "Go ahead and see if you get your variances and then come back." But we've been, the engineers have been talking with each other. There's no disagreement. We've just been responding to their questions.
But if you go back before the planning board, which you will have to do, and you change the application, then we're going to have to hear this again.
If we change it? Yeah, we're not, we...
That's why, that's why we normally want the planning board to make the decision. And then we look at it rather than bounce it back and forth like a ping pong ball. That's true.
Yeah, they had recommended that we come for this meeting here, because the issue to me is, I don't know if you can see it on this, is that, is that basically, there's just a tiny little patio that's there. When I bought the house, it was there. And then when I went in to actually make it a little bit better, we, it was a concrete patio, and we took it out, and we were making it, what's the right phrase, semi-pervious? Is that the right phrase? We were making, we were putting gravel in as opposed to concrete.
The proposed patio includes bluestone slats surrounded by crushed stone. So like he's mentioning, it's really a semi-permeable surface. And it also ended, the proposed bench that surrounds the back of the area, it does not have a continuous footing. So it also allows for infiltration and minimizes the amount of disturbance.
So when we started to do this, that's when Ed came by and said, "Well, this, the existing patio wasn't on the survey itself." So that's when he said we had to come and get the actual patio itself legalized, that the patio plus the bluestone walkway. We've actually made it better by taking out the concrete and just putting bluestone plus gravel. And then we decided to put in the second drywall and fix all drainage issues that there could possibly be by extending. And I mean, I don't know, I don't know if you know the house at all.
I was there.
Oh, so you saw, okay. So it's a pretty tiny little backyard. And this is basically creating a tiny little patio to put, oh, and then you saw the table that's already there, but it's just on the, it's just on the grass right now.
Very rural.
(laughing) It's very rural right now. It's just to sit on top of here. But basically, they really want to legalize this, and the bluestone's a lot nicer than what the concrete was before.
Okay. Let me, I mean, I did go out there, and I saw your table on grass and dirt, and I said, "I think I know what he's, what he's trying to do."
Right.
My problem with the application is that there's also a section of the village code and of our zoning code that says that we are only to grant a variance to the extent necessary, the minimum extent necessary to accomplish what is being sought.
Right.
And in this application, as you can see from the drawing you've got there and I've got here, really takes up almost all the backyard. And that's, that's essentially my problem with it. I see the need and the justification for something, and I'm sure you would do a good job with it. There's nothing about the quality of the work that I have to question. That's not our, our task anyway. But it just looks as though there's going to be nothing left of the lawn back there.
Well, actually, it's, there's a huge, I used Artemis. I don't know if you know, do you know Tara, I forget her last name is now, Sweet Goldberg, Artemis Landscaping? She's got a beautiful backyard plan with all kinds of plantings. And we have, we've actually purchased everything. I didn't realize that we weren't going to be able to put that in this season, because I didn't know how long this process was going to be. But the backyard is actually going to be spectacular. It's going to be much more beautiful than it is now. This is just bluestone and gravel here. It's really just to put the table on. This is what exists right now. This is where the house is right now. And you're talking about adding this, and that's it. And it's basically bluestone and, and a table that is about, I think, an eight-person table and an umbrella. And then the rest of this is all plantings along the wall. And it's really pretty nice stuff, actually. Oh, no, we're not using up the whole backyard. In fact, this whole part remains, this is now grass that we're putting in. The prior owners had two cutouts, which I don't, we don't have on here now. But there were two cutouts that were just gravel cutouts in the middle of the, and there was no grass at all. And there were just some kind of random plantings left. And I decided to make it look pretty nice for however long I'm living there. But the, the most important thing to me is to make sure that the existing patio is okay to be used. I mean, you saw, I have a grill that's just sitting out on a temporary table right now, because we stopped everything once Ed said, "No, you, this isn't legal as it is right now."
Well, if you just legalize what you already have, it's a lot smaller than what you have proposed here.
Yeah. Then the question becomes, as you said, it's very rural. You have a table that has nowhere to sit on it. And all I'm proposing is to put bluestone slats underneath of it. And it's per...
That's a lot more than would be required to support the table.
Oh, well, I don't care if we take this line out. I mean, we own the bluestone. I'm sure Andrew can figure out something to do with it. But I don't really care about that. I mean, I'm literally, here's where the end of the porch is.
Mm-hmm.
And here's where the barrier would be between the patio. This is basically would be a counter, a grill. That's it. You can see it, like dotted line there. Table would be right there. We could take out these. I don't really care.
I mean, those last two lines, up and down, you would be willing to take out, modify the application? the application?
Do we care?
It's up to you.
I don't care. Sure.
Okay.
I just want the chairs to be able to slide out from the table.
I understand.
So these two lines, is this important also? This line of bluestone here, that's up against the steps, correct?
Yeah, this goes up against the steps. I mean, this really just makes it look right. I think it looks in balance. Like, it's easy for us to say right now, "Wait, let's just take this out." I don't actually know what that would ultimately look like, but I don't, I'm not trying to, I actually think it would be better to stick with the design in terms of how beautiful the thing would be and the coverage we've dealt with through the drainage. We've made it, we've enhanced it. If we don't do this...
You mean the flow of water?
The flow of water.
Not the coverage as such?
No, no, not the coverage as such, but we actually, if we don't do the plan as stated, the drainage is worse off than it is if we do it. I mean, I, I take your point, I understand it, like, from looking at it this way, but if you look at her whole design, I don't know, it does all kind of work together. But like I said, I'm not wedded to having this line of bluestone there. You want me to take it out?
I, I spent some time over there. Nobody was home. I didn't just break in, but, well, I guess I did break in.
But you're welcome, anyway.
But it, it just, you know, struck me as creating an awful lot of surface that was not, not grass and normal backyard for a good reason. But I, I thought you're just seeking more than you needed for the purpose. If you're willing to take out those last two lines, I will call it, the two that are closest to you?
These two?
Those two. Then I don't think I would have a problem with the application.
Okay. Can you just take a quick look at this to make sure it's still going to work? I don't want to be saying...
We haven't heard from my two colleagues.
I have seen.
We have to...
But I want to ask.
Those are regional, Evan?
So we say, take this one out? But if we take them both out, does it, do they still work? Or do we really need this one? Doesn't the table go like this?
I would have to say, I didn't design, so I don't know. I, you know, it's not my design, but I would have to say for the table, what you have there, I would take two lines out, but I would leave the lines from the middle and have a piece of gravel between the stones, just so the stones are underneath the table.
Tell me what you just said, I'm sorry.
What you're proposing is to take those two lines, right?
Yes.
I would be proposing to take this line and this line, and I just leave it center cover for underneath the table.
So you'd still have two of the, you'd still have...
You would still would take two out. You would still take two out.
Just be under the table.
Yeah.
Just would.
Okay.
I mean, the location will be a little different. The coverage would be the same, what you were saying.
So, let's start. The line closest to the aqueduct, what would that, what would be done?
That would be grass.
That'd be grass, okay. Next one away from the aqueduct?
That would be grass, but this, we would split it half and then just make it smaller rectangle.
I mean, I think in total, you're, you're arriving at the same amount of coverage that I was asking.
That's right. I'm just...
You're right, they were saying just...
They, they, what I think about the design, and he owned the bluestones, but we paid out.
All right. I, I think that's a reasonable suggestion, and if that is, your application is modified?
Yes, that's our application is modified.
I'm going to pick it up and reflect that in a minute. I'm not sure I understand exactly what he's going to do there.
Well, I think if we can do it arithmetically, because what we'll do is we'll eliminate this much of the coverage.
So you're not going to have twenty-two slabs?
So you're not going to have stone between the, you're going to, there's going to be grass? You're going to move the stone under the table, but you're going to walk on grass to get to the table?
Correct.
Okay.
Sounds like if it gets, that adds up to twenty-two slabs. If we remove the twenty-two slabs in a way that works, is that in line with what you're thinking?
Yeah, and I'd like them farther away from the aqueduct, so you've got the, the backyard there. Okay.
So we're agreeing, we're going to remove twenty-two slabs, including the, the line closest to the aqueduct?
Yes.
I gave you what you need?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No.
Anybody out there? Okay. As revised, I'll move to approve the application. You're still going to go back to the zoning board? And if things change, sorry, the planning board? I hope you don't have to come back to the zoning board. But if things change at the planning board in any way that affects our issues, then you'll have to go back.
Got it.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second on that motion as, as defined and revised? All right. Vote from the left, Evan?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I'm missing Sam.
Will you?
Seems like he might.
I think he's outside, yeah. He, he might be helpful later.
I'll call you later.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Malone?
Are you sure?
Good. Nice. John Malone, Very Small Architecture, representing Jackie and Andres Serevillnik. The project is for an addition to the existing house. And we are here to request variances for expansion of a non-conformity and a side yard setback and additional coverage, which for patio. The side yard setback issue is related to an existing shed, which is shown here, one-story frame shed. We're proposing to maintain the same footprint that's there and improve the shed. Now we get a, with a quick rendering to show the potential improvements. This is the existing shed. You can see it now, that's in the side yard. So it's really just cleaning up and rebuilding the shed on the same footprint, but, you know, this has a sloped shed roof and this without a cable roof, so there's an increase in, increase in lighting. We think that, as I said, we don't think there's any significant impact on it. In terms of coverage, we are adding a two-story addition to the rear of the property, which is designed to provide an additional bedroom on the second level and to provide a, what would be the right, say a moderate full-size suburban kitchen on the lower level. The house was a very small-scale house from Matheson, almost designed to be intentionally small-scale. The second level is, is mostly in the attic space of the gables, so the areas associated with the second floor is smaller than it would be if it had a full-size story. The kitchen was originally designed as sort of a servants' kitchen, had that kind of formality in the nineteen forties, where there was a servants' quarters and a back stair to the kitchen, and a lot of entries and exits to the kitchen. So the addition to the, to the west allows us to provide on the lower level a kitchen, and because it's a two-story addition, allows us to provide a master suite. The coverage, the new coverage, we're exceeding coverage by about three hundred square feet. The patio and porch that's associated with the rear of the house has over more than that. So in terms of the, the coverage associated with the building and the new addition, it would still be under the allowable coverage without the patio. The, the building as a whole is, is significantly under F R still, so in terms of its overall volume, we're thinking that it's below what's allowed. We are adding a stormwater system, which is going to improve by the planning board, which accommodates the additional coverage in that zone. So we, we see runoff impact and additional coverage overlap is dealt with in that form. We provided a relatively small neighborhood analysis. The neighborhood that the house is in is in Matheson, and it is in a one-acre zone. The house, the property is undersized, and that, given the, the current code, the undersized properties have a coverage reduction from where it used to be when the house was originally built, or even in the fifties when the code was first put in place. So if you look, there are other examples of houses in the adjacent area that have increases that are similar to what, or overdges that are similar to what we're proposing. And they are, both of those, Lot B, both of those are in the smaller lots, the undersized lots is where those covers happen. In terms of visual impact that's associated with the addition and also the patio that was shown in the rear of the house, we've taken shots that are focused on views that would have impacts of the water, and there will be no impact, no visual impact on the addition, because it's slower than it is near the front, and it's to the west side, to the riverside of the existing house. So that has no impact, and the patio, again, is on the riverside of the existing house. So in terms of the impacts, we don't feel that there's any impact with the addition of the patio. If you'd like, we could go through, if you want me to go through the lot house, you can, or if you have other questions.
I've got your zoning analysis page, zero point one oh. If you could look at that. Okay. And if you look at the bottom of the middle, find it hard to identify these, are these Earl's drawings?
No, these are, yes, well, they're the office's drawings.
Every time we get something with Earl's name on it, there's a lot of mass to it, that's all I'm going to say. But at the bottom of that page, the coverage calculations as proposed, there's a structure in what I will call the north or northwestern corner. That's the new addition, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the bulk of what you're adding in terms of coverage?
Yes.
Right. And the patio that you envisioned putting in, what I'll call the southwest corner, there's already something there, is there not?
Right. It's, it's of similar size to what's there now. The corner has been squared off, and some of the coverage has to do with the addition of some stairs to deal with an existing, this level.
I mean, I, I visited the property. I, I knew the property, anyway, but I, that, that area where you're going to put the patio in struck me as a little bit iffy in terms of, you know, it's not flat, and there were a lot of places where there are things sticking up.
Yeah.
I mean, I see, I see issues if you lived at the White Woods, so that makes sense. Everything you're doing, basically, is on that side of the house, sort of facing, as I would call the Robins, who are to the, to the west with the Hudson.
Right.
And you've got a line of coverage in the, along the property line between the Robins and the applicants.
Yes, we have a lot of, a lot of screening.
Now, are they, are they around the year coverage, or will they be...
Yes, it's white pines, it's, it's, it's a significant evergreen barrier because they're now, and it's been upgraded, the lower portion in this area has been upgraded with semi-evergreen shrouds below the evergreens.
Okay. And you didn't have any adverse reactions from the Robins when it was reset out?
They're very happy about it.
Okay.
I think the, the maintenance of their, of that line has been the applicants, and so the Robins are happy that there's been improvements along that.
Okay. And if we condition approval on maintenance of that line of screening, you would not have a problem with that?
No problem.
Okay. All right. Anything else from colleagues?
No.
Anything from anybody out there? Okay. I did visit the property. I do, I do see the need for the, the additional structure. I particularly see the need for a new patio, so that nobody gets, gets injured in that, in that spot. The coverage at the moment is somewhat under what's permitted, and with all of your changes, it would be fourteen percent over, which is not insubstantial, but it's within the envelope, which we usually regard as reasonable, if there's not adverse effects on neighbors and reason to protect, but this will be a precedent for other houses in the area, but that Matheson Park, in particular, every house is so unique, it's hard to see how that would be a problem. So I, I will move to grant the application with the condition that the app can maintain the screening and support on the western side of the property between him and the Robins. Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Vote from the right? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like we only need three people to show up at the hearing from now on, huh?
Yeah, it would be much more efficient.
Okay. Last on the agenda tonight is the Alcoa Replicable Living Trust.
Mr. Chairman, from the Board, Bradishworth, from the Wolf River Reserve of St. Mass. We represent the Alcoa Wolf Rule Living Trust. In response to your question at last meeting, Leslie is the trustee of the trust, and she is here this evening together with Andrew Raich.
So you're in charge?
She's in charge.
Don't you forget it.
At the last hearing, your board had asked us to go back and review files in Village Hall, and to try to piece together as best we can how the existing coverage non-conformity came about. So we did that. We went out and talked to some of the key players and compiled all that information, and we submitted fairly lengthy and detailed submission package documenting everything that we found out, including we aired a side of caution, just we included all the materials that are on file in Village Hall. I think some of the main takeaways, most of the improvements were subject to the planning board and zoning board review and approval, building permits, and specific occupancies. The two main exceptions are the pool patio, as well as the stepping stones leading from the house to the pool.
And those you're going to take out?
We'll get there.
Okay. Just get into your high points, that's all.
And so we take into account those two improvements, as well as the fact that retaining walls previously as a matter of practice in the village were not counted towards coverage calculations, but today they are. I think that best explains how we got to where we are today after our clients purchased the property in September of two thousand fifteen. So we regret where we are. It was at no fault to, to my clients. They are willing to work with your board to the best they can, to the extent profitable, to make some removal of impervious in order to reduce the extent of the variance. At the last meeting, you may recall, they had proposed removing the stepping stones leading from the house to the pool. Upon further reflection, our clients felt that they needed the stepping stones for the passageway and to avoid attracting dirt and grass into the home. So instead of removing the stepping stones, the current proposal is to actually remove even more square footage by removing the gravel portion of the patio that's off the side of their home. That totals four hundred fifty-two square feet. So as compared to when we were last here, at the previous hearing, so we were proposing a thirty-eight percent variance, the application we're calling for tonight is for thirty-five percent. I would also remind the board that the application itself, this all stems from improvement in the, in the driveway, to enlarge it some, to improve circulation and maneuverability in front of the driveway, in front of the garage, I'm sorry.
Okay. In terms of this sheet, would you put in your package the coverage calculations? If you could get that out for a moment?
Sorry, you have your question?
Okay. So just going down that chart, the, the lot is about two and a quarter acres, something in that, along those lines? So it's a larger lot than is required in this own, by, by more than double. You're not changing the dwelling, you're not changing the cabana. The pool patio is already there, but you're trying to legalize that.
That's correct.
And that's fifteen hundred and sixty-eight square feet of your, of your change. The swimming pool and the hot tub are the same. The existing steps are to be increased by a hundred and seven. Tell me about that.
What's your... Two or two to three are not in. What's the 202 to 309? That's on the existing, again?
I see, they're existing already.
Exactly. That's not, part of this, Mr. Chairman, is these were prior surveys performed by Scott Chamberlain, the brother-in-law's surveys. We have an updated survey, so some of the new numbers don't necessarily reflect, you know, additions to the property, they really just reflect the latest and greatest calculations, the more accurate calculations.
The all-walls number, you have it as existing as 1,144, and that would be increased to 1,205, and that would be an increase in the wall space around the increased driveway. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. None of the other walls are going to be?
There's a wall on the, I guess the near side of the property that's being put in. But identification of your board is?
Yeah.
What's your name again? Your name?
Abyah. U-B-A-D-A-H.
Okay. Go a little more slowly if you will, we'll, we'll get there.
Sorry. There's an additional post-wall on this side as well.
Right.
I think it's only two feet or three feet maximum. It's just a consideration of the same walkway area, considering the grass walkway, it's still retained, or, so it's, I guess, smoothed it out a little bit more.
And that's the additional wall reflected in this chart?
This additional wall plus the one on the additional ground. It's covered, it's the net, right? Because we're removing a 71-square-foot wall that exists today.
Right.
And adding a 97-square-foot wall.
Right.
So it's the net change.
Okay. The basketball court stays the same, the one-story building stays the same. Now, the terrace gravel area and patio is 749, and the proposed is 749. Are you changing that?
749 is being reduced to 297.
And this reflects the current plan, and the board, the board may not have seen this yet, right?
No, it lies by that.
Because, Mr. Chairman, this is the revised plan that we're presenting tonight for the first time, where this hatched portion of the patio that's gravel is proposed to come out. So that's 452 square feet. That may not be on the chart that you have before you.
No. And there's a reference in your submission, right at the end of page nine, under conclusion, that the applicants are willing to work with the board to minimize the variance by removing a large portion of an existing patio. I was thinking about the pool patio. You don't mean that, do you?
We don't.
Okay. It's the area you just pointed out?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Then the stepping stones?
Are now proposed to remain in place to accommodate passageway between the house and the pool.
So instead of 234 becoming zero, 234 is staying at 234?
And then you have 452 square feet that was previously staying in, coming out.
And you get that from that one patio that you're taking out?
Correct. The patio in total is over 600, ballpark, like, do the math, it's 643.
So 452 plus 191, yeah.
So 191 square feet of stone remains, just the unhatched area.
And you're taking out 452?
452.
You're taking out 452 and adding back in the 234?
That's correct.
So we're up, you're improving by 218 square feet, is that right?
Yes.
That, that of those two?
That's correct. I have my numbers here, 218, that difference. As compared to the last application.
Okay.
For the last presentation.
Okay. I mean, the stepping stones, at least to me, seem like a pretty minor item. Either way, the?
The importance of leaving those in again was that people would travel between the house and the pool without them tracking, letting dirt and grass into the home.
Okay. But what have we found out about how the pool patio, 1,568 square feet, got approved?
Or didn't?
Got in place without being approved.
And so it appears it was not approved, the building permit? That was issued December of 2005, reference page two of the site plan, it was approved by the planning board, and it referenced pool and other site work and landscaping. And in talking to Andrew the builder and some of the folks involved, the best answer we got was that there was a misunderstanding that the pool patio was in fact approved under that building permit. The reason why I say it appears it was not is simply based on the verbiage on the face, the language on the face of that building permit. Give me, give me one second.
If you could reference your exhibit G, that would be good.
Which approves page two of plan with pool, including site work, landscaping, cabana, and pool. Andrew the builder assumed that pool patio and the pool, that's approved under the building permit. There are no, the plan that goes along with this permit is on page 18.
Page 18, is that?
Of the same exhibit, sorry. We, we, and the pages for the building permits.
Okay.
And so it shows a pool, but not show a pool patio. So based on that, and the basic building permit is why we may be saying, or other than it appears, that the pool patio is not permitted under the building permit, but it's not clear what full set of plans were submitted as part of the pool project, but for sure whether or not the pool patio was in fact part of the building permit application, because the same drawing was also included as part of the building permit under exhibit F, the single family.
You know, when the coverage areas are declined, the patios are 400 square feet, which obviously does not include the pool patio.
What's shown, like, if I could just, what is shown is patio off the side of the home.
Which is?
So I'm assuming that the patio of the 400 is in fact involved.
The one you're willing to take out now?
Correct.
Okay.
So my understanding from Andrew is that when he was asked to?
Identify who Andrew is.
Andrew's the builder, Andrew, please give your last name or color, okay?
Be prepared to spell it.
If you got 13 letters, it's correct.
I got 13.
I got 13 letters. I'm not sure which ones, but.
Okay. And it's interesting, Mr. Chairman, in that same exhibit G, a couple pages later, on page two, as a page one is the building permit.
Right.
And page two is a certificate of occupancy. That was issued in September 16th of 2015, shortly before my clients closed on the property, and the CO certified the pool in the outbuilding. At this point in time, 2015, the pool patio was in place. So again, it wasn't permitted, so it appears, but when the building permit came out in September 2015 from the CFO, the pool patio clearly was there. The building department had had issues, the CFO, without any comments on the pool patio. Oh, you mean, it's been placed since fall, since August 6th, and the village is just there.
All right. Okay. Mr. Rosner, I asked you to stick around, and you very kindly have. Is there anything you can add to the record, shed any light on the pool patio and what happened?
No, the only thing I can think of?
You may want to get a mic.
Yeah, sorry.
Or you may not want to get a mic.
How come he doesn't get to spell the name?
It's only six letters.
Only thing I can think of is that we all assumed everything was part of the same permit when we did it. The pool patio design was actually done through the landscape architect versus the architect itself. So Tassos Kakkoros, who was the, who designed the house and the cabana, he did not design the, the way the patio is. Tara Goldberg, who's Artemis Landscaper, she came into the picture a little bit later. So all I'm thinking is, is that we all looked at it as saying, yeah, pool, pool patio, cabana, but it was a different contractor who was actually the one designing it at that time, and a separate permit wasn't pulled. If it wasn't pulled, I'm not, I will tell you that my recollection of those days, it's mind-boggling to me to think that anything got done on that property that wasn't approved because it was so microscopically looked at when we were doing, for example, this big stone wall that's on the side of the driveway, that is, functions as part of the pool wall, you know, you need to have pool wall built all over. Well, I remember when Ed came by and, with measuring tape, and then told us that we needed to put another two feet of fence, I think there is, above the stone wall. This was all being done at the same time, when the basketball court was being built, everybody came out, stopped work order, coverage, everything was looked at, and all along during the course of the project, everybody was, you know, was very workman-like and very nice about it, everything was good, but it was just very, very well-studied as this, as this property developed. The pool patio was done, I think, in 2006. The house was built first, the cabana was built second, then the landscape architecture went in, and so it was all done around 2006, and it was all done pursuant to the same permits. We fixed the stone wall on the front. I then subsequently bought the other half acre and added to it, which actually should, you know, gives some relief, I would assume. I know there's sloping there, but it must give some relief at some point to the property in terms of what the, you know, how the math works out, but I guess it's a long?
In terms of coverage, you have more area to apply the numbers to.
Right. We have, yeah, another half acre, which was just added on, I think it was like 1.7 when I first bought.
David, you had mentioned to me that the reason for that purchase was because you had a tennis court in mind? It wasn't necessarily at the time to try?
I don't like to admit that. But, no, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't purchased in order to, to change the math on coverage. It was actually purchased for two reasons. One was because the property just, I don't know, you know, you know Daisy Lane and then Metaway? Well, it's just weird the way, you know, 200 years ago, or 100 years ago, they drew the property lines, because the property naturally goes up to this hill, but then that wasn't part of the Metaway property, that was part of the Daisy Lane property. So I went to, you remember Carol, Carol Goodkind, she, she owned the property on Daisy Lane. That's when I was trying to just actually buy that piece, but.
Okay. But it gave relief to the coverage numbers, whether that was the intent or not?
Right.
Okay. So the pool patio was put in in 2006. What, if anything, do you have after that, besides what you just showed as in exhibit G, that showed that the village was aware of it and either, either took no action or otherwise implicitly approved it?
Well, certainly of the basketball court addition.
Oh, I'm getting to there.
Okay.
When is the basketball court?
That was many years later.
2009.
Okay. Stick, stick with 2006 and the pool patio first, and then we'll, we'll get to the basketball court.
Exhibit H, that's one, yeah, that's one refreshment here. So in December of 2006, and Andrew, again, feel free and do it to help, there was a stone wall in front of the property that Ed came out to the site and requested certain drainage improvements to be installed in the village driveway to handle the runoff from the stone wall. Exhibit H shows is a handwritten markup of a plan, the handwriting is Andrew's.
Right.
That shows the drainage that's going to be installed with respect to the stone wall up front, and if you look at the pool patio, it's shown on this drawing.
And the handwriting, December 16, 2006, that's also yours?
That's mine.
When did you write that?
When the building inspector and was not Ed, was assistant, came, we, we repaired the stone wall, which was, pre-existing stone wall, which was collapsing. We repaired that, but then David asked us to put the curve, stone curve, because the dirt from the road was going, you know, was going to the street on the right way. So we put the curve, stone curves, and the building inspector said, what is not on the drawing? So you have to give us something for the record. And I asked, doesn't have to be by engineer, he said, no, you can take any survey, just mark it up, but ask David, I mean, ask brothers, in the meantime, they would also agree it, because Metaway drainage was stopping a couple hundred feet before that. That part of Metaway was overflowing with the water. So he said, as a good gesture, because that's such a big project, would you mind to put two catch bases to connect, so all of that gets released?
Okay.
And David agreed to pay.
I get that, but there, on exhibit G, which council is holding, there's a handwritten date.
That's mine.
When did you write that date?
When did you write?
I wrote on December 16th.
Okay. You didn't add that in the last month or anything like that?
No, no. I gave it, no, no, that was, I couldn't get the CFO before I gave that to the, that was the idea, it was the idea to, to mark it up.
Okay. And I just said G, and Evan corrects me if it's exhibit H. Thank you. Okay. So that is a, a document you represent that was submitted to the village in December of 2006?
That's right. And I'm sure that the public works has that document, because that's where the drainage is marked up as.
But when we inspected the village files, in full disclosure, we did not find that document in the village's files.
What's the source of this?
Andrew.
Excuse me?
Where does this document come from?
He had it in his, Andrew had it in his.
I said it's to be my file, but the public works, when I think about it, the public works is the one which?
You think it would be more DPW as opposed to building?
That's correct, because of the drainage.
Okay. All right. Tell me about the basketball court. In terms of timing, I'm sorry.
The basketball court was applied for November of 2009, approval by the planning board. That resolution is included in your package as exhibit L. Building permit is included as exhibit M, as in Michael.
It's worth mentioning that the certificate of occupancy again is issued when?
That CFO was also issued September 16, 2015, when Mr. Rosner sought to close out all the permits prior to consuming a sale. That's the whole reason of the basketball court.
Well, now, exhibit L, the second page, is a certificate of completion, signed by Ed Maron, right? Oh, but again, September of 2015?
Correct.
Okay. So for the basketball court in 2009, you got the building permit, but there was not an additional village sign-off, if I can call it that, until September 2015. There was not a CFO that related to the basketball court separately.
There were four CFOs issued for the property altogether. One was in 2005.
Tell me your exhibit, please.
Exhibit F, page six.
Okay.
The CFO for the home. The other COs were all September 16, 2015, and one of them is included in exhibit G, page two. That's the pool in the outbuilding. The second of the September 16 COs is included in exhibit M, as in Michael, and that again is for the pool. I'll start with the basketball court first. And that exhibit is not page ten, but it's the second page of the exhibit. And the third CO on September 16, 2015 relates to a bathroom, and it's on the house, there's no effect on the coverage, and that would be the end as an end.
Okay. So the, the basketball court CFO was simply one in the series of September 16 of last year?
Correct. So at that point in time, the pool patio had already been installed for nine years ago.
The survey that's attached to that CFO doesn't show the pool patio?
Right. And I mentioned that in my letter, that we acknowledge that. And so my best, again, sort of deciphering what might have been on, and again, Scott Chamberlain, you know, he passed a couple years ago, so I couldn't reach the surveyor. But in putting it, piecing this together, it appeared that he was asked at the time to show the basketball court in connection with the basketball permit application. Of course, he was asked to allow re-surveying the entire site through the coverage calculations of the date. Why that, why that happened, or why that didn't happen? I don't know. But it appears it was always a fluke of the day, it was a basketball court, and that was the focus of this survey. And this is stamped approved by the building department in November 2004, 2009. We need to talk about some of the other exhibits in the package, that there are minutes of zoning board meetings, planning board meetings, resolutions of zoning board and planning board, again, showing all the approvals over the course for the last 10-plus years. So we're focused on the pool patio and stepping stone, because again, those are the two improvements that we could not find any express authorization for, any of the materials.
Was the question whether the village was aware of the pool patio at the time that the? the basketball court was being built?
Well, really, at any time. It says that the basketball court, in my mind, was a separate development, and I'm looking for whether, in addition to what you mentioned earlier before we talked about the basketball court, whether there was a separate village document when the court was put in, which for some reason had a drawing of the entire property and the pool patio in there, which would help you.
Yeah, right.
You can't find that.
Interesting.
I can't speak to a document. I can tell you that when we built the basketball court, Ed was on the property several times. He, he's the one who came up originally and said, hey, for basketball court, this is coverage, David, this is, this counts just like a patio would, which I was not aware of. We went then, pulled the permit, did, you know, and dealt with it that way, but he was on the property, you know, certainly walking across the.
The reason why that's important, the juxtaposition of the pool patio, here's the basketball court.
You can't get to it without going to the pool patio.
In fact, there used to be, here's, there's a trampoline, there was actually a trampoline there, we actually moved the trampoline up here, and in order to fit the basketball court over there, that suggestion, I certainly talked to him about how to situate it on the property so that it would work out, but he was up there, you know, a number of times, and certainly, as we said, the pool patio had been built three years before we looked at a basketball court.
Okay. Let me ask you to look at exhibit G, page seven. This is the application for land examination and building permit in December of 2005. The, to the bottom, under the heading description and area of this work, you see that?
Mm-hmm.
As I read it, it says, poolhouse and swimming pool. What's the next word?
I believe it says landscaping.
Landscaping as per survey, comma, site work, site work, okay.
And when you look at the building permits, Chairman, it corresponds, I believe, to that description.
Take me to that, would you?
The first page of that exhibit, not exactly, maybe it's.
No, page one, but it refers to site work, landscaping, cabana, pool.
Right. And identify for me, if you would, what you think the survey and site work referred to on page seven would be.
All right, then those are the drawings that we don't have. The drawing that was associated with this building permit is on page 18 of this exhibit. And again, it shows the pool, it shows the cabana, and it shows the patio of the house. It doesn't show the landscaping. Again, this exhibit was prepared by the architect Tassos. As Mr. Rosner explained, Tassos' role was different, the landscape architect's role. We don't have a landscape architect. We don't know if it was submitted. Just like the whole plans. Right. Nothing in the village's, village's file shows plan submitted.
So we don't know what landscape as per survey, what, what survey is referring to?
Everything that's on file in the village, and I copied it and made it on file, this is everything. So whether it was just right to keep it, whether it was, I don't know. We did the best we can to go back and review.
No, I appreciate that. This is a very comprehensive submission, and I appreciate the work they had to have gone into it. What about the DPW? Would there have been any reason they would have been involved in any aspect of these various constructions?
DPW for drainage?
Only for the drainage.
But the reason why it would have been involved, it would have been involved in the drainage was because it was. DPW has been involved in drainage. So frankly, I didn't think of looking at the DPW's files for that one, and Andrew shook me until just tonight when he mentioned DPW.
Okay.
But definitely there would be no patio drawings with DPW.
Correct.
I wouldn't think so either. Definitely be more involved with the.
And that drawing which I made at the note, it doesn't help any of the coverages, I'm just, I was making a note that the drawings were not, were not hiding in any point the existence of the patio around the pool.
Yeah, that's kind of hard to hide a patio. Okay. Comments, observations, questions?
Can I say one, one more thing? You know, I, I really appreciate your question.
Are you married to the trustee?
And, and answer your question, Rossner, technically the alternate trustee.
Okay, so you're standing to address the.
Yes, exactly, in case it does come up. I, I hope it's clear, but I really appreciate the questions here. I mean, we, we've learned a lot about our own property through this, so some things come from this positive. But truthfully, I, I hope it's clear that we've tried to be thoughtful in producing our proposals before we even got to you. Our original planning board submission had a lot more to it, more coverage. Frankly, when we toured the property, when we were thinking about buying it, we had heard about this tennis court, and we had thought that it was, it was possible because of that additional half acre to add coverage. The first we learned of this not being documented was our first planning board. So we've learned a lot. We took, you see us reducing this coverage, it actually reduced a ton more than that because our original submission added coverage.
To the planning board?
To the planning board. So by the time we got to you, we had a very small reduction, we tried to remove a little more with what we submitted. Frankly, we're open to, we want to do this work because this is necessary to create a safe condition. We've already had a truck back down our driveway, it took out, backed into a tree, it took out things, our kids play in this driveway, it's not a safe condition. We'd really like to get this work done, we're nine months into this process, we're, we're very flexible in trying to work.
Well, you said that in the application from council too. What do you have in mind in terms of flexibility?
Yeah, I, truthfully, I think there's, there's small things that we, that we could do. We tried to remove this patio, this proposed wall, that's 34 feet, this is not allowed me to absolutely remove that, that's cosmetic. Frankly, I didn't actually know it was still there, and this is how these plans come together. I would actually add that these two areas here are actually not walls. So these are improperly counted, these are stones. And Andrew just pointed that out to me, that's about 200, it's hard to estimate, these are roughly three walls here, 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 and here. Two of those are not coverage, so I don't know.
They are, they're included though, the calculations of coverage.
They're included in what we submitted. And, and so, in effect, we could remove any wall there because there is no wall there.
But the boulders sitting in the ground, they actually got my boulders.
They should not have been counted, and we certainly removed any wall.
On the driveway.
Sign of coverage there.
Yeah, the boulders.
Yeah. Beyond that, I, I struggle, we've looked at this a lot, to find anything else. I mean, you did come out to the property, I know you, you had commented yourself about how the pool patio, it'd be very difficult to remove from this. It's, it's kind of poured to this property, it's been in place for nine years, everything around it, it's grown up around it.
Evan, anything else? No?
Very exhausted.
I mean, it's disturbing, obviously. I don't know what else we can say about it because I don't think we're going to shed any more light on it.
Okay. Anything from the assembled mass out there?
I can, I haven't spoken.
Trustee.
Trustee. At the risk of sounding hokey, we're not people who make waves ordinarily, never in my wildest dreams, and I think I would show up at a zoning board meeting with a posse of people, including the previous homeowners, being here and staying. This really is about the safety of the driveway, and I know that there are so many other things that have emerged as a result of this process, but I, you've been there, we watched somebody back into a tree, our friends have come over and sort of scraped the side of their car on the driveway wall, and my son, our three-year-old, stands on top of the wall, which we would like for him not to be able to reach.
We can't solve that.
Well, we can, we can, we can.
So while I recognize that this is about so much more for me as their mother, this is about the safety of the driveway and not watching our friends back into trees as they, they're blocked up tops and you can't circle around, and I just wanted to mention that and thank everybody for their time, including this group, because it's a, it's a long night for everybody.
Okay, thank you. So I did visit the property, and I foolishly or otherwise drove up the driveway, parked in the existing area, and I didn't hit anything, but it did take me three back and forths to get out of there, and the driveway was not that crowded when I was there. So in terms of the legitimacy of the safety concern and the need for driveway reconfiguration and expansion in order to provide safety, I am perfectly satisfied that that is an accurate statement. And, and that, you know, that has some impact on this, certainly, as with so many other applications, homeowners see something that they want to improve on, and they make an application to the building department to make that change, and inevitably, that brings the village out there, and they discover five or six things that have not been properly legalized, and this is, I guess, we're up to application 21 this year, and I'll bet, I'll bet 10 of them have involved situations where existing circumstances were not properly legalized. So you, you know, you can't be too draconian about it, neither can you accommodate it if it was done intentionally. One thing I do note here is that there's absolutely no suggestion that the present applicants did anything to evade the requirements. And Mr. Rosner's look of befuddlement about what happened looks genuine, so I, I don't have any, I don't have any real belief that he was trying to put something over some years ago either. On the other hand, to the contrary, I mean, the, the village has been out there, as various of you have pointed out on several occasions, and the document dated September 2015 was a sign-off by the village on what's there, and if there was, I mean, it didn't say pool patio, but it certainly didn't make any issue, and Ed usually identifies things when he sees a problem. That's why most of our applications come up. So I'm influenced by that, and frankly, having been out there, I mean, the pool patio works, it's part of the overall presentation of the house and the grounds. You know, we could ask you to tear up 50 feet of it, or to change this wall, or whatever you were suggesting earlier, you hadn't noticed until the other day, but I think that's all pretty minor stuff, and it does not make, it would not make sense to me to penalize the applicants under these circumstances. So for me, putting all that verbiage together, I am moving to approve the application as submitted and revised this evening. And counsel, what I would ask you to do for the benefit of the record and our temporary secretary, who is regretting the fact that he volunteered for this this evening, if, if you could recreate this page for us with your present numbers?
Do you want the initial column for the prior survey, or just give you the latest and greatest, what the exact proposal is, or do you want the comparative?
I would, I would like to repeat what you have here and then add a new column on the right side.
A new column, got it.
Of what you really are asking for tonight, which you represent will be a reduction of 218 square feet net of coverage.
As compared to when we were here last month, overall.
It's on the chart.
However, it's an overall net reduction.
You were already reduced by 127.
Okay, it's.
Add that, right, right. So, right, so the total is 345.
127 and 218 is 345, fortunately.
That works.
Okay. So if you could submit that for the record, I think that would help us quite a bit. And after you do that, I'll issue, assuming, again, two people who agree with me, I'll issue the, the letter of approval, which will be somewhat longer than usual.
And that last column will have today's date, that's how we'll clarify it.
Fine.
And just to clarify for me, the only, the only change here is that we're removing that patio, we're putting back the stones from the last application. So the stones were out in the submission that we have?
Correct. No, I, I, sorry, I said, in the initial application, the stones were out. In my cover letter, I indicated that upon reflection following our last appearance, the stones are back in, and the patio comes out.
So you don't have a drawing that reflects the stones coming out? I'm sorry, we take the gravel coming out, that's the drawing here today. So we'll submit the drawing, get a chart that reflects the latest.
Okay, the more, the more clarity, the better. And, and the change you made previously that reduced your coverage in your prior proposal by 127 square feet, that change is not affected?
Correct. But I can, just, just for the sake of it, just to be, to be legal, I think this really should not be put as a wall because it's not a wall and it's not, should be a wall, just for the future and for anything, it should be removed as a wall.
We're not, we're not going to do that.
Okay.
You made that argument to me when I was out there, I know it's, I know it's mostly bushes and.
Well, just the boulders which were there.
He who has won a motion should sit down and not argue himself out of it, okay? All right, and you haven't won it yet, I made a move, a motion to approve, but who knows what will happen? How do you move?
I think we have to second it first.
Yes, do I have a second? We'll vote for your end?
Yes.
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 We gotta have three votes. All right, get what you were promising to us, and we'll get.
Don't go back to the.
Unless you're too good to take that.